Are you guys ready, Phil? Are you ready? Is everybody ready?
Counsel is going to have to follow the presentation.
I want to call this regular council meeting September 13th to order. And we have no public hearing today, and I have a couple of announcements that I'd like to make. The first one is that our overhead projector has a burnt out light, and we won't be doing any presentations on there. So unfortunately, the public that is sitting here and the public that will be watching this online won't be able to follow what we're talking about, unfortunately, but I'm sure that we will get through it. I just wanted to update the community on the whole issue with bears and what's been going on. And even though I think the community, I know the community, has really stepped up their due diligence on wildlife attractants, we still are seeing some areas where the community is slipping. But all in all, we have had vast improvements, but more improvements are still needed, necessary. And I guess I'm calling on every resident to be as vigilant as possible, report any attractants that they see. I know that social media has been pretty diligent, and there's been lots of pictures. Every picture that we see gets forwarded on to city staff and dealt with immediately. Fines have been handed out, but we are more concerned about people becoming compliant than we are about fines. So having said that, the community should keep doing the good job that it has been doing, and hopefully we will have the bears moving on to greener pastures and finding food elsewhere instead of our garbages and back alleys. Myself and a few members of council had the pleasure of sitting in jail for Crime Stoppers over the weekend, and it's one great to see council sitting in jail. Maybe some people would say where we belong, but it's nice to see Crime Stoppers being active and proactive, and the club is doing well, and I encourage people to look and know what Crime Stoppers is all about. Roundabout construction is moving right along, and it's really taking shape. And again, we do have updates on our website every Friday to tell the community what's going on in the coming week, and looking forward to that hearing on. We had a meeting last week with the Thomas Burke residents and went through the whole issue of water upgrades and sewer upgrades in that area, the whole annexation. We've sat down with the residents that were available and explained the whole process to them with the regional district. And the ball is in the Thomas Burke residence court, and I'm hopeful and optimistic that they will see the benefits of joining the city and having potable water and an upgraded sewer system. So you will be, as a community, be hearing more about that coming up. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. I have one change in the agenda. Item nine E and F are going to be moved to the end of that to keep all our vacation rental items all in one area. So with that, I need a motion to approve the agenda with that small change. Counselor English, Counselor Nixon, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And I need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 23rd. Counselor Sols and Counselor English, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Is there any business arising from those minutes of August 23rd? We did have a delegation lined up, but I'm under the impression that there is an accident that has held up our delegation, so if they do show up, we will see if we can make some time available for them. Next item is, I have eight A, which is no submotion. Counselor English.
Yeah, just preparing to introduce your resolution at the next meeting with respect to a bylaw to regulate wildlife attractants. It's moving forward with some...
Okay.
Looking forward to the approval of the council to ask, to direct some of these motions.
Is there any action required for us today?
Oh, it'll be other new business on the next meeting agenda.
You're good. Good. Speaking of new business, the next item is administration, and because of the D.C. municipal meetings coming up, we need to make a motion to cancel the regular council meeting set for Tuesday, September 27th. Counselor English makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Sols. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. And we're moving into nine B.
Clearing conflict interest as we work in the vacation rental industry.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, offering forward item B, that the application to rezone lot seven, section 23, township 23, range two, west of the Sixth Meridian, Coopie District Plan NEP 80224, 1912, Aspen Crescent, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sols. And Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation?
Very briefly, your worship, the vacation rental application is for home as new in Aspen Crescent. The applicant is applying for a three bedroom vacation rental suite. The property also includes a legal secondary suite, which the applicant has indicated they would live in while vacation or in safety place. Thank you, worship.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any comments, discussion from the council?
Just, your worship, this is a new trend that we're seeing, that people are going to be living in part of their home and renting out the other part of their home, and I think this is a big trend that we're seeing.
Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
And the second part of that, your worship, offering forward that zoning bylaw number 2123 be read a first and second time, and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sols. Discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Item C, your worship, offering forward that the application to rezone lot five, section 23, township 23, range two, west of Sixth Meridian, Coopie District Plan NEP 85663, 1321 Leagro, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sols. And Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation on this?
Yes, your worship, very briefly, it's a vacant parcel, which is a somewhat unique application. It's our first application for vacant parcels. The application for five hundred family to rezone those parcels for subdivision was also for vacant parcel for vacation rental use. So this would work in that when they go to build their home, they would have to apply for a business license in order to get the vacation rental use. And at that point, they would have to demonstrate that they have the correct parking and so forth, and be able to evaluate an application for existing one. Thank you, worship.
Any comments or questions from council? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Second part of that, your worship, is that zoning bylaw number 2124 be read a first and second time, and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Item B, your worship, offering forward that the application to rezone lots 10 and 11 of block 35, section 27, township 23, range two, west of Sixth Meridian, Coopie District Plan 636B, 102 4th Street East, from R2 Low Density Residential District to R2B Low Density Residential Vacation Rental District be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sols. Mr. Sols, your presentation forms?
Thank you, worship. This subject property at 102 4th Street East is proposing to rezone for vacation rental use of a single family dwelling with three bedrooms and six off-street parking spaces. I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
No, maybe just those.
Yeah.
But it is at the edge of the central realm of residential district and downtown central business district.
Comments or questions from council? Did you have anything else? Counselor Sols?
Your worship, just so the rest of council knows, I believe there is another vacation rental right next door, and this building is right in the alley.
Right. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
I have.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Second part of that, your worship, is that zoning bylaw number 2126 be read a first and second time, and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. For item G now.
Yes, worship, jumping down to item G, development services, vacation rental, we inform that the vacation rental community consultation summary be received. Do you want me to use this individual?
Is it a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sols.
Do you want me to read through them?
Well, we got to finish this one motion here. I guess, Mr. Strachan, we probably should do the, any presentation, we should probably do that now.
Thanks, your worship. So what we have in this package is there, we did a community consultation summary. This is the consultation that council asked us to conduct in the summertime. We did receive a number of submissions and expressing a number of concerns, as well as some support for vacation rentals. We used that input along with input we received previously from other associations of the community, accommodation association, from economic development and so forth, to formulate this report back to council. And made some additional recommendations on how to proceed with vacation rentals moving forward. So the proposals include a couple components. One is to move from a enforcement protocol that is complaint only to one that is actually pursued. So actually investigating vacation rentals, identifying them, and beginning contacting those property owners, requesting that they apply or rezone, or asking to decommission their vacation rental, and if they don't comply, eventually ticket it at date B. The second component of it is to establish some form, sorry, excuse me, the second component was to continue to work with the accommodation association on membership for vacation rentals. There's a concern that they're not contributing to the marketing community they're doing. There was a desire, and it makes a lot of sense to have them contribute in some way. In other communities, they're associate members, so they're not a member with all the rights of hotels, but they're an associate membership that has limited voting rights and so forth, representative of the scale that they represent in the marketplace. But in that way, they do contribute to marketing, and to certainly gives them a voice at the table on how the community is going to be marketed in the future. So getting that aspect of our accommodation sector participating seemed to be fairly well received. However, they had not, at that point, gone back to their membership and discussed it further, and I'm hoping that we'll meet with them in the near future. Focuses have moved on to other things at this time, but hopefully they can come back to the table with us sometime this fall and move forward with that component of it. The final component is related to a cap on vacation rentals, and there's been quite a bit of discussion around the need for such a cap, and the fluctuations is very significant in where people see that cap to come from. We've reached out to the tourism associations in both the economy and the communities to sort of see if they had true data, empirical data, on how, what percentage of the marketplace, the accommodation marketplace, is taken up by people looking for vacation rentals. And the key ones that we're looking for in that data were people who would, if we don't offer that type of accommodation in Revelstoke, wouldn't just move into a hotel or a different type of accommodation, they would move on to the next resort community where they can get that product they're looking for. Unfortunately, nobody was able to provide that data to us. There certainly was a lot of interest in having that data, but nobody's prepared that data yet, so hopefully in the near future we'll have it. What we've seen, though, is in what people will tell us, and I haven't seen any hard data to prove it, is that it's about 5% of the marketplace. So what you see before you is representative of that 5%. So we're looking at the capacity of our current accommodation in Revelstoke. If you take 5% of that and say that's, that would be our cap for vacation rental, that's where you get the 125 bedrooms and the max capacity of 250, because we have about 5,000 capacity in all types of accommodation in Revelstoke. So that's the final component of it. The key with that is it needs to be continued and reviewed and updated, so we propose adding a review, that cap, how it's performing, where we are in relation to the applications, and whether there's new information or better information to adjust what that percentage should be, either higher or lower. And moving on, a key piece of that is we've identified more legal vacation rentals than we have capacity for in this cap. So moving forward through enforcement, we will actually be reducing the number of vacation rentals that we have in Revelstoke this winter. So enforcement will be removing more from the marketplace as we move forward. So when you see the number of 125 bedrooms, there's more in the marketplace than that right now. So we're anticipating that some people will leave the accommodation industry altogether. They don't want to apply for rezoning, they just have no interest in taking it that far, and they will withdraw from vacation rental. What we're hoping, though, is that some of these people will also make the choice to go to full-time residential accommodation instead, recognizing that they're going to have to pay the rezoning fee and go through the business licensing process. They'll look more favorably towards residential accommodation than maybe for seasonal or for a full-time residential accommodation for a winter month. So that's a hope. Third part is we've been working for two years with the community to get vacation rentals legalized. We've got a certain component legalized. We're kind of at a point now where everybody who was going to apply without some encouragement has applied. This would be a way to encourage participation. If you don't participate now, you may not be able to have the opportunity in future. Thank you.
Well, I guess I, for one, am glad to see this report coming to council, and I'm encouraging council to support it. I would like to also thank all of the people that took the time to respond and give us your ideas and thoughts on how vacation rentals should be managed. And a lot of people recognize that vacation rental does fill a need and is a necessary type of accommodation for a lot of people. So I think that we have the groundwork to start a really good process and try to be everything to everybody, but I know that that can be impossible. But I think that this is a real good start and a groundwork for dealing with vacation rental. Counselor Nixon?
Yes, your worship. I think, first of all, we need to thank the staff for a good bylaw, you know, like we're reviewing a bylaw that's two years old, and upon direction from council, we decided that we would do a complaint-only system, and now we're reviewing it and deciding that, okay, we're going to go out and curtail some of the ones that are illegal. And I'd like to thank people that did write in, great effort on their letters into council. But there is a kind of misunderstanding with some of the problems that have occurred out in the community, and I'm going to just call them what they are, and they're block houses. We've had some problems with, they're actually long-term rentals, and they've got 11 15 guys staying in the house, 11 cars parked up front. And then you've got your bad neighbors. So you've got these bad apples that are not necessarily vacation rentals, bad neighbors, but they kind of muddy the picture. And then we're seeing a new trend come forward to council, where people are asking for a vacation rental, but they're actually going to be in their house, and they're going to be accountable, and they're going to be responsible. So it's kind of like a bed and a basket, rather than bed and breakfast. It's like a welcoming, and all the ideas about encouraging people to be good neighbors, I sort of think of it equivalent to the broken window syndrome. Like, you know, neighbors in Revelstoke don't have to put up with noise, and yes, the RCMP are expensive, but they are our bylaw officers in the night, and they are the appropriate ones for people to call if they have problems in their neighborhood. And people don't want to police their neighbors, but they need to be able to say to their neighbors, that's not appropriate, we're not putting up with that in our neighborhood. We go to R1 district, and we really want to raise our children here in a safe environment. So we're, council is kind of walking the picket fence to get it right, and we're the mercenars, we're not going to please everybody, but we really want people to be good neighbors, and we want to have healthy neighborhoods for children to grow up in. So I think this is a good start to review this.
Any other comments from council? Counselor English?
So I just thank you, your worship, through the chair. Mr. Strachan, I'm just wondering, with our vacation rentals currently, how many bedrooms do we have that are actively zoned correctly for vacation rentals?
We have at this point... Yeah, I did see it on the floor. I just wanted to let those people that have block houses with 11 or 15 guys in it, that Counselor Nixon is going to be on them, and they are going to be in big trouble.
Yes. So we're all together now in this town.
I was going to stand up and defend all of the young guys everywhere in the world that are feeling slighted, but I have the wrath of Counselor Nixon on my shoulders.
Your worship, within the report indicates we have 21 applications we've received for vacation rentals. 10 applications have been approved, three have been denied, one was withdrawn, and one application was placed on hold by a property owner, and six applications remain in progress. However, since this report was written, we received an additional three application this week. So we're anticipating that we're going to be receiving a number, particularly because of the cap that's approved by council. The number of bedrooms that we have at this point is 51 left, yeah, 34 people of accommodation from the center of the...
Thank you, Mr. Strachan.
Counselor Lemon?
Ah, your worship, thank you. Like Counselor Nixon, I'd like to thank everyone who wrote in and provided comments on the situation. In reading through the comments and my thinking about this, I'm really trying to take in everyone's input, whether it's somebody, a youngster who's saying, "Cause we're unaffordable because we're taking out 5% of the market and turning it into revenue generating properties, the post-residential," or the accommodation association, or lots of neighbors just concerned about erosion of their neighborhood. I think there are some good tools in here. I interpret the way this bylaw is written as sort of the stick to the carrot and the stick that existed in our existing bylaw, which was almost completely based now, we're saying, we're basically creating scarcity with this bylaw and hoping that people will rush in and get their bylaw approved for their house. However, I think there's a couple tools in here, but I think my issue with the bylaw as it's outlaid now is that it's missing a lot of tools that we could be using. I have had an opportunity to look around at what other communities are doing within the legal framework that we operate in right now. The main tool that we can't use, unfortunately, because we're a municipality that doesn't have the jurisdiction, is a lot of the taxation rules. We just can't really, that's up to the province to do that. Some of the things in the form of a list that I have sort of had in response to the way the bylaw is structured, some of which I would like to see added to the bylaw are the following. Number one, the way it's structured right now, I think what will happen is in the next few months, we'll have a whole people, a lot of people rush in the door and try and get their vacation rental legalized. But what we will be legalizing is only, are only places where they have the capital that outlaid 18 million bucks to get the bylaw through, and that's a gamble, that's an 1800 dollar gamble, so only people who have that kind of resources to do it. And we will, in a sense, be what I think, permanently rezoning these houses to vacation rentals, to the exclusion of all others in the future. The bylaw, I don't really think accounts for partial space rentals, which is something that other communities have looked into. So I know a few people who illegally rent a room out for a few months in the wintertime, you know, because they're made, they've got, you know, a single mom, for example, a couple of them single mom with kids, trying to make a little bit extra money. This system, I perceive it as is laid out here, will not allow for those people, rather it will, to participate in vacation rentals. It will instead be on, on something that's accessible to property owners.
Counselor, just for your information, one of the questions that I asked earlier is that this will, this is short-term rental. Anything that is by the month is still going to be allowed?
No, I'm talking about short-term rental, these people.
Okay.
They're illegally doing it now, and I just don't see an opportunity for them to bring their house into compliance because it's uneconomical, so...
If they're renting to someone for three months, that's considered residential boarding?
No, no, no. No, I'm not talking about three months, I'm talking over, like, a few days over the weekend, that kind of stuff. They're only open for the winter season, is what I'm saying.
Oh, and they're open for three months?
Yeah, that kind of thing. So that's something that's not allowed. A lot of other communities are opting for a graduated licensing fee. We have a single fee. I don't think that the fee, as we've outlined here, comes close at all to covering the cost of enforcement that is going to be incurred, and that in essence means the rest of the taxpayers will continue to be paying for a few select now vacation rental zone properties. I, maybe it's not something to be reflected in the bylaw, I'm not too sure how the communication works right now, but I don't see a lot of wording working towards it. One of the tools that I would like to see introduced, or at least discussed at the council table, also involves the expiry of bylaw upon sale of the property to somebody else, and that is enforced in communities in B.C. I anticipate we will, astute homeowners who are considering selling the property in the near future, it's who have access to 1800 bucks to risk it, will say, hey, let's just go get this bylaw on here, and it's going to increase the value of the property, and that may take from the available rental pool. Other issues, I guess for me, and other tools, I'd like to say that could be included here, that are included here, is possibly some integration with the bed and breakfast system that we have right now. In fact, I do anticipate that a lot of people who are currently doing vacation rentals will look for an opportunity in the system to move over there. Another tool is proof that the person who is doing the vacation rental is the principal resident of the property, or having a requirement that someone be in the house for the rest of the year, because it becomes more economical for the homeowner to rent it out for the, what I hear is by five and a half months, is what you can rent it out for in this town in terms of total nights, and then leave that property vacant for the rest of the year. I don't know, and I'll have to, through the chair, ask staff if there are any requirements for subsequent inspections of the home. I know we have to get an inspection first, get registered. Our other municipalities have opted for inspections every three years, so health, safety, violation inspections, so, you know, we could be 20 years down the road without anyone having a book in there. And of course, it's a much more dangerous situation when people drive over Rogers Pass and have a couple drinks and go to bed, and if there's a fire in the night, they don't know where everything is, they don't know where the exits are, they don't know where the doors are, so I think there's a heightened health and safety concern there. And another tool, this is the last one, is the options for geographic restrictions And another tool, this is the last one, is the options for geographic restrictions or some sort of geographic consideration. Some places have opted for a maximum of 3 on a block or 2 on a block, so that we don't end up with a situation where we have them clustered. Or perhaps, we would like to take the opposite approach and suggest where they are more appropriate and have the vacation rental homes there. I, you know, I've said this a few times, I don't want to beat up staff or council on this. It's a complicated issue. We don't have a control of all the levers here. A lot of this rests with the province, and we have put forth our request to them to, you know, amend tax laws and make it more equitable, for example, for commercial owners. However, I'm just not happy with the bylaw as it stands. I could have supported it with amendments, but I'm really putting it out there to see what the councilors are thinking. Thank you.
Well, I guess a couple comments I'd like to make, Counselor, is 2 things. One is that I think what we have here is a good start, and it's a basis for discussion and changes, but we have to start someplace. And I think that a lot of the comments that you're making about concerns with the operator and, you know, there's 2 parts to running a vacation rental. One is having the zoning, and 2 is having a business license. So if we're getting complaints and we have people that are not good operators, they could not get their business license renewed, or it could trigger, we're getting complaints about the facilities, getting a business license renewed could be contingent on a site visit to make sure that they are, they are safety compliant with all of the rules and regulations that building inspection will have. So I think there is, there is stuff there, but I guess, I like some of the things that you're talking about, but I think that this is the basis where we start, we grow, we change, and we add and we make it better. Mr. Strachan, do you want to jump in on this?
Your Worship, I believe we do have a schedule for business license reuse. The fire department and our daily inspector go back into commercial businesses. There's a schedule for it, and unfortunately I don't have it in front of me, but our next report will include that information.
Well, I know that every time I get a new tenant, there's inspections that are done just for those things. So I think a lot of those things are, we have the tools already, but again, I think that this is a good start. We're back to our first motion. And I know that we're expanding the discussion, but I'm sure that as we go through the rest of the motions, that the discussion would probably get smaller. So I'm kind of allowing the scope of the discussion to expand, because, Counselor Nixon?
Well, I just want to enforce that I do like the idea that Counselor Orlando has brought forward about the consideration that it not become a sale item, that a vacation rental attached to that house. But I think we need to have some sort of mechanism to, again, probably...
How do you do that? I don't, I don't see how you can do that.
Through the business license, I guess.
I don't think, you're talking about zoning. Zoning stays with the property, and they would have to apply for a business license. But for people that want to go through zoning and then not get a business license and not operate, they're, I don't see how we could stop that. Mr. Strachan?
Your Worship, the only mechanism I could see that would be usable in our format would be some form of a covenant on title, and I'm not sure if we can register such a covenant that requires that the zoning be changed to allow for a transaction to take place. I'm not sure. I know there's a number of things that communities are looking at or are using that haven't been tested yet either, so. It would be something that would need to be reviewed on and find a mechanism, or if there is a mechanism that could do that for us, and we could report back.
Well, I think that the real, I guess what I'm trying to say is that this thing is gonna evolve, and we're gonna be looking at it, and we're gonna be watching it. The community's gonna be watching it. And, you know, a lot of communities are dealing with, are grappling with this issue, and there's a lot of problems. Again, I think that this is a good start, and I think that in a few years from now, you're gonna see something that's gonna be fundamentally different, based on our experiences and what we can and can't do about certain things. So, again, I just encourage council, let's move forward, let's put this thing through, and then let's watch it and see how it evolves. Any more? Mr. Strachan?
Your Worship, just, if there is a change, Your Worship, there's a requirement that they redo their business license. I mean, if people would be aware of those changes, then it could trigger an inspection of the property and support for the new property owners, but also would give us an opportunity to ensure that they're fully aware of what the rules and regulations are on vacation rentals and with the municipalities' bylaws.
Any more, Counselor Orlando?
Yeah, Your Worship, I respectfully disagree. I think that, I don't disagree that some of the direction in the bylaw as it's presented before us are steps in the right direction. However, I think we're letting the horse out of the barn by, by setting a cap, because the individuals who supply successfully to have their house rezoned, I don't think we're going to see those residences revert back to anything else. I think we're gonna create a rush for people to apply, because they know that there's a cap. And I understand it's part of the intention of the bylaw, too, is to force compliance. However, I don't understand, I guess for myself, why there are not more tools within this bylaw to have a, I guess, for lack of a better word, a finer approach at this point. It is a step in the right direction, but I think it's a half step in the right direction, ignores a lot of other opportunities that are available to us right now and are being taken advantage of by other communities. And I will add to that, that, for example, a graduated fee is being proposed by other communities. We're doing a zoning, essentially zoning each individual property here, and that might be the difficulty in, that would require a covenant or legal consultation to do it, but there are other approaches. I think that other communities are taking them, would allow for that sort of a system. So we might have handcuffed ourselves already in taking this approach.
Well, Counselor, this we could remind you that you can make an amendment to anything that you want, and see if it gets supported around the table. I guess, I'm celebrating that here we are a year and a half later, we finally have something at the table that the community has been demanding, and I would rather be moving forward and starting the discussion and finalizing it. Now, I'm assuming, I'm actually sure, because, you know, you should be starting off by saying that, "I'm not gonna vote in favor of this thing, and these are the reasons why I'm..." To try to talk your fellow councilors into seeing their way or proposing amendment. And right now, the only motion that we have is that the vacation rental consultation summary be received. But when we're coming to those other sections, if you want to do that, you're entitled to. So, does anybody have any discussions? Any more comments? So this motion is, "Community consultation summary be received." All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Your Worship, I'll bring forward item number 2, "That council direction on bylaw enforcement for unlicensed vacation rentals be amended from a complaint-only program to an active enforcement program beginning September 30th, 2016."
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Is there any discussion on this part of the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Item 3, "That staff continue to engage in discussions with the Revelstoke Accommodation Association on the opportunity for membership and contribution from vacation rentals towards community marketing initiatives."
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Orlando?
Ah, Your Worship, I have, what I'd like to learn from staff, and although it does touch on it in the report, is why, at this point, we're not able to come forward with a more concrete proposal or a direction that would spell out where we want this.
Mr. Strachan?
Your Worship, we met with the Accommodation Association, we brought forward this proposal for associate membership, gave them examples of other associations that are using that type of reform, but we do not have control of that organization. They have to go and make a decision. They have not made a decision on this particular component. The representatives that were there spoke favorably to it. However, we're very clear that they need to go back to the membership and get a resolution on this. To date, they haven't done that yet. But when they do, we intend to meet with them again and move forward and assist them in any way we can to get this into place. This is the Revelstoke Accommodation Association, it's not a city.
Mr. Shabola would like to make a comment.
Your Worship, with respect to a contribution towards tourism marketing, just like the council's resolution of the U V C M request, if the province would enforce and apply the Provincial Sales Tax Act and the municipal regional district tax regulation, then these short-term accommodation properties and those offered online would be required to collect and remit PST and tourism marketing, additional hotel tax.
I think one of the other part of it is that if this council didn't support doing anything about vacation rentals, this would be a moot point. So it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg? We're, we have to support regulating vacation rental, and the second part of that would be then the hotel room tax and the money going towards the market. Did you hear that again? No? Motion is on the floor, and this is to engage discussions with the Accommodation Association. Is there any more discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Item number 4, "Your Worship, that council approve a policy level maximum for vacation rental in existing neighborhoods in the city at 125 bedrooms with a maximum occupancy of 250 people."
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Nixon?
Your Worship, this would be a starting point and could be reviewed down the road, but this is equivalent to 2 good-sized hotels. So, you know, recognizing the role that Revelstoke Accommodation Association plays in Revelstoke and what they contribute to the community with their taxation, I think this is a good place to start.
Okay. And I guess, one of the, just thinking about the comments that Counselor Orlando's made in looking at this motion here, is one of the other ways to achieve this goal is it, could it be through business licensing, so that if somebody has a vacation rental and decides they're not gonna do it, that won't affect that number, because the number is actually regulated through business licensing rather than through zoning. Is that a possibility? Mr. Strachan?
Your Worship, we wouldn't be able to restrict somebody from getting a business license if it's an allowable use of their zone. So if they'd been zoned for that use, we would not be able to restrict them from getting a business license for that use. So what this is proposing to do is we put a stop on additional applications that were brought forward. And when we do hit the cap, it would be some point where we would likely be reporting to council, and there would be additional discussion about how can we do, we fit that threshold. We've legalized the maximum that we feel the community should have at this point. Is that going to be adjusted? Is it working? I think this is going to be a work in progress for many years. I don't anticipate that this is going to ever be off our desks for work, refinement, and improvement. At this point, we are trying to provide council a maximum amount of leverage by using rezoning as a tool, and a maximum amount of discretion. Councils under no obligation whatsoever to give zoning to anyone. So we're trying to keep those maxims in place and avoid some of the other pitfalls that have come from looking at development permits or other tools where you have an obligation if they need all of the regulations. Council, this point, truly has full discretionary authority to review each application on its own merits. So as we develop and get more refinement and more of these legalized and operating within the regulations, we're gonna have a better idea on what additional regulations are needed. As far as the geographical component of vacation rentals, I think that really needs to come out of a neighborhood planning process. I'd be reluctant to put in geographical, that say, "We can do them here, we can do them there," but not here and not there, based on who cries out, the community who doesn't. And I think it's, it's something that should happen through a neighborhood planning process. It would be good to see us move in that direction, or there was some desire to move in that direction previously. It would be good to see us go there. The first neighborhood planning, of course, is the city center, that we're looking at the Victoria Corridor. Then likely after that, we'll start moving into the heritage districts, which have been reviewed for quite some time. Following that, I'll get to some other neighborhoods. But that would be the process and the tool that we want to utilize, or sort of just apply things we think might work. And I don't know if the tool, tools that Counselor Orlando has mentioned specifically will take into account the individual application and the merits of it. So I don't know if that really is gonna work. It'll be interesting to see some of the communities, how that works for them. If you disperse them evenly throughout the community, is that better than concentrating them in one specific neighborhood? I can see pitfalls with both. So I'm reluctant to see us go down that road until some of this stuff gets tested and true. A lot of it's just being put out there by communities. There's not a lot of experience with it yet. So I'm trying to keep us in a position where we have as much council discretion at this table and as much authority at this table as possible, and there isn't any regulations up there that council's tied to.
Good. I agree. Counselor English?
I just, I have concern with 125 bedrooms. My concern is that that number's too low. I'm a big believer in having enough inventory to need man. And if we've already bought enough illegals operating and enough legal that have been brought into the fold, that eclipses that number, is that number too low? That's, that's my question. Because if we could get compliance from the legal ones currently, we're at our maximum already.
Except that you should remember, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Strachan, but this doesn't include commercial properties that are C1 zone, that they can be doing vacation rentals there. Two, anything up at their resort is gonna be, can be vacation rental. And three, the council-approved McKenzie Village has a certain amount of vacation rentals allowed there that are not part of it. So there's a lot more availability of vacation rental than that 125. Did I miss anything, or am I...
You're correct, Your Worship. Any zone that allows for accommodation, at this point, would be, this policy would be applying to. It's for, the policy is specifically for applications in existing neighborhoods for vacation rental zoning. So it would be R1, R2 neighborhoods now, R4 as well, where they apply to do that for a house within the existing neighborhood.
So what we approved earlier today to go to public hearing is the lead room that hasn't been built, would that be part of the 125, or is that different?
It would be, Your Worship. The only way we would see that being excluded is if the developer had applied for the entire subdivision, which is what we saw with the application 500 town. They applied for the entire subdivision to be vacation rental allowed. So they applied for...